Good evening. The time is now 7:00 PM. I'd like to call this May 8th special board of select meeting to order and ask you please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the empty republic for which it stands, one issue under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call.
Art Kang.
Kevin Cunningham.
Thank you, Lord.
Thank you. We have only one item on our new business, and that is to consider an act on adding possible cuts to the Town of Plainfield 2024-25 budget. Hey, anything?
Yeah, couple things.
Okay.
So, we cut $100,000 from the rep department in the last thing, right? Am I correct?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, I'm sorry. So, and then we added, we had added revenue of $127,000, correct?
Correct.
Right. The rep department still has a net increase over the last three years of $149,000, even after that. I've looked through all of the budgets of all of the departments, and I'm not coming for anybody, I'm just pointing out the obvious. The only department that has had that, there's no other department that comes even close to having that significant an increase in the last three years. I mean, I'm not saying we don't need recreation, because we do. We need to make sure our kids have other things to do besides get in trouble. But I don't see another department that's had that kind of increase since 2021.
Okay.
So, to start off, what I would suggest, my motion would be for us to cut at least $75,000 from the, from the rep department. Because really, when we did the seventy-five, we didn't cut because we added $127,000 into income. Am I correct?
Correct, so you have a line item which is revenue, and you're paying the money for revenue for the, for the rep department.
Correct. And then the last cut, we cut $75,000, and they still have a net income, a net increase over the last three years of $129,000.
Okay. But for this year from last year, they have an increase of $37,310. So where would you, what line items would you cut?
I would start with an assistant rep director. They have a program director, they have a department head.
So you want...
I mean, I don't want to cut any of it, to be quite honest with you, but since we've been tasked with that.
Are there other areas you wanted to make suggestions for cuts?
Well, I wish I had Mark here, because I'd rather know, what is a pool coordinator?
That would be Casey, and she's been a pool coordinator for a few years.
Okay, so she coordinates all the activity around the pool?
Staffing, events.
All right, how, how many hours a week is the pool open?
Oh, I don't know the answer to that. I'm going to say though that they have...
Estimates, but...
Probably about twenty-five, twenty-six hours worth of activities, and plus they have season items that they added as well.
So, so say thirty, not quite a full forty hours.
Right. And she does have training for staff as well on top of that, so maintenance, so the actual maintenance of the pool.
So she does maintenance of the pool?
Absolutely, yep. As far as certain functions of maintenance, yes. She always is...
Not, she doesn't.
Testing, chemical testing, modifications to those.
All right, so she does maintenance, plus, plus coordinates all the pool activities. So if she collect, if she is coordinating all the pool activities and doing the staffing and the schedules, so that means the rep department's not doing that, correct?
Well, she's part of the rep department, so technically she is. They are in their budget.
In their budget, yeah.
The increase of pool receipts was not $127,000?
No, I did not say that. I said that...
I mean, not pool, recreation receipts.
The increase for the revenue was $127,000...
No, it was from the last one. It was a seventy, seventy thousand increase. After the cuts, it increased by fifty-seven to $127,000.
I'm looking at what it says here, and it says recreation receipts under local revenue, it's $127,500.
Yes, but before we did our last cuts to recreation...
This is a five eighteen, he told me this was the latest raise.
That's right.
It is.
But before that, it was at seventy thousand. So I'm saying it only increased fifty-seven from the original proposed budget, or seventy thousand.
Proposed, I'm talking about the nutshell as a whole.
And then we, and then we went to make the cuts, and then it was added another fifty-seven to that.
Either way, it's $127,000.
To make those cuts.
Yes, either way, the line item for the revenue is $127,000. At the end of the day, because the fact, this, this budget hasn't been passed.
Now, let me ask you about that particular line item, maybe. Because the rep department wanted to get the pool on their own eventually, right? As far as self, self-sufficient?
Yes, I mean...
So that they didn't have to come to the town.
The history has always been that they'd like to have enough revenue coming in to pay for the staffing, maintenance, AUPK that has been coming in years and years ago, it was about $100,000, you're looking for revenue, but they never got that. Since Mark's come in, he has made money for the pool, through the pool.
So, are we breaking even, or...
We're a little ahead.
We're a little ahead?
Yep.
So he's paying for that pool coordinator by, by receipts?
In, 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 by way, I believe that would be correct, to say.
All right, oh, the other thing, maybe you know, swimming pool and lifecarts, that's up twenty-five percent of $16,000, is that because of a bit of a wage?
That's part of it, yes. You're getting a lot of hits for the pool, you know, lifecarts, so it's, it's just a little above that.
I mean, and, and the other question, another question I have is, what is off-site support for the economic development?
Perfect question. That one I can answer easy.
I know, I figured you could.
Yep. We have a recreation, I'm sorry, we have a, a recreation, so we have the new person, and she's been in for a few months.
Shannon, yep.
And she's doing a great job, but we have a person we had hired prior to that, who is about $2,000 a month, and that is Taike support. So they, the associates there actually work on grant applications, they do administration of the grants, they help to produce those grants and put them into the places we're looking to get them from, you know, for my support. So what I had done was, I hooked up her with this company, so both of them are working currently. They have the expertise and they're training her how to do certain things. So my intention was that for one more year, keep them on, because they're very, very well skilled, and they're very supportive of every grant we have.
And grants are extremely important.
Yeah, the value of the grant coming in is unnecessary, so...
I agree with that. Also, it's saying that the increase for the grant writers' pay is because we raised her to a supervising position.
Yep.
Who's she supervising?
She's in the supervising position because of her background and expertise.
Okay.
Everybody has someone who is under you.
No, I understand that, I'm just saying, so because she...
Answer no.
Okay, you moved that to, her to the supervising position because of her background?
Yep. Of the need of that particular position and her background.
Absolutely. Okay. And as much as I really think Kelly needs the help, I think we have a lawsuit this year.
I will absolutely, a thousand percent disagree with you. Thousand percent.
You don't think we can, you don't agree that Kelly doesn't need the help, or you don't agree that...
I agree that we need the help, absolutely present. If we get a payroll here on Monday from one particular department, it takes, don't even two days to do that payroll. It's unnecessary, in my opinion. Plus, there's a lot more grant administration support that is needed, there's a lot more things that she's doing now that need attention and support. So I, I agree that we need a part-time person.
You know more about that than I would, as far as that is concerned, I'm just concerned we need to cut our number. In the under the select.
Yeah. Legal notices, a hundred and one percent?
Yes, that's the change.
No, it applies in expenses.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, it applies in expenses. Never mind.
Oh, a lot of that with everything else, if you notice, every single department has like computer issues, I don't have a computer lying there.
That's...
Yeah, that's the software, we talked about the software, we have to have always three six, Microsoft Office, always three six five. So we have to have that, those were the requirements.
And on the partner, it says general town. Engineering firm?
Yes.
Can you say a little bit about that?
Sure, the intent is to have an engineer, and it's written here as a firm.
Okay, so it's...
But if we can't get an engineer, a person to come in as an engineer, we're looking for a firm. I did just do some research on this, the town of Kimbley has an engineer, and they're paying $150,000. So we're trying to entice, that's why I have $120,000.
All right, I was just concerned, because it has $205,000. And what is a meeting coordinator?
Well, we do have anticipation that we would be able to put up a new microphone system, new camera system, and be able to have someone monitor those during some meetings. I would like to do that for a one year, and then be able to get, in the meantime, search for an automated system. The automated system is something where you have cameras that are set up around the room, and whoever speaks in the camera actually refocuses onto that person. In the meantime, we have to have some way to be able to, we like to livestream, State of Connecticut is pushing towards livestream.
All right, so that's what that eighteen thousand is?
Yep.
And the council of government, it's an increase of eighty-nine percent, what is that?
That is, you have the paramedic intercept, paramedic intercept helps out to be able to transport different people who are in need, calling for ambulance, and then we get a discount for that, to them. That would be much, much more if we were just doing straight annual services. So the rates went way up because, similar to what our, we had the $8,000 for our local ambulance, similar to that, those contracts they have with ECO were very low cost for many years. So the contract came up again, they went down to bid, and then prices went way up.
And we also have, what's a basin truck?
Oh, that's their, you know, where town do they use the plow truck?
That's a basin truck?
Yeah.
Do you have any other questions?
Sure. Art, you got a couple?
Yeah, probably lots of mine, because you touched on some. Like finance, I knew, I kind of knew you needed that part-time, anyway. Assessors, computer software. Anything from there?
Oh, she is in need, this is one of the departments where the three computers they have are old, so they have to be replaced.
Election workers, did you hear enough from there?
I think we can talk about that in a minute.
Okay, because I think there's stats on that, to, to what they were spending in the last few years.
Yeah.
I remember you had early, early voting.
We get to that in a minute, we'll definitely touch on that.
Buildings and grounds, we talked about that, maybe vehicle expense, they have a new vehicle. These are, that's small, I understand. Highway supplies and expenses, same thing, I put the stats on the last ones, they're like, I was way under the budget, way under, so...
Just to be, just to be talking about it now, if you notice, it was dropped down about $4,736 from last year.
Yeah.
We, we did the same thing, we tried.
You noticed it last year?
Yeah, we tried, so...
Because in twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, they spent $9,200, twenty-two, twenty-three, seventy-three, and this year, they're not even $5,000 yet. So, you know, there wasn't fifteen.
And I agree, still, that's why we made the adjustment, and I'm hoping and praying that we don't ever get to the point where we need, yeah, like twins or the stents.
And you did say the police department needs more, and we needed less?
Yep.
We went quite a bit last, right?
Uh, to some degree.
Sixteen thousand, no, so... Planning department vehicle expense, they have a vehicle?
They share, sometimes they do have a vehicle, yes they do.
Okay.
And then as a backup, they also share with the assessor.
So that'd be a total of $3,000 for that vehicle, with the assessor, $1,000?
Yep.
And planning, $2,000? So it's a portion, you touched on it, anyway. The training conferences there?
For which one?
For the development, they'd be extra thousand, right now.
Some of the classes of training have been going on, however, we'll get to that in a second.
And I did notice in training conferences, for most of these departments, they haven't used much this year, and why?
Um, sometimes, I get the, sometimes there's available classes, sometimes they just don't have the staffing to go. Just so you understand part of that, to give an example, today, the town clerk's office was manned by someone who had just retired recently, because the other two needed to go to a class. They needed certifications, and they went to the class and had some fill-in.
And rack senior vehicle expense? That one with the lock. Lock, because we already touched on some of these, like meeting coordinator, I haven't had an interview.
Yep.
The only other one is capital expenses, and BOSF funds, that's a big increase.
That's given to us by the state, right? We have the control over that, yeah.
Kevin, good.
Like you said, boards and commissions too, is another one.
All right. So what I did was put a list together, I asked all departments last night to see if they can give me some ideas before the end of day, and I did get these from different departments, and some of these are also my ideas mixed in. You'll note that what I'm looking at right now is the assessor IT software hardware, it's really hardware, is going to be $3,000 from there. She's looking to see if she can purchase computers this year with any money she has left over, that's why she has $3,000 listed there. The vehicle expense, she said she would work with Ryan if they need the, for vehicle expense, so that's...
So it is $2,000.
Yep, so that's hers. Election workers, I said that it would be possible to drop down $5,000 on top of that. And going back to the history of the election workers over the past few years, they had planning left in their budget, and as a matter of fact, take a look at the current budget, we've got the package on that here. Yeah, so if we take a look at election workers...
This year, they're on $11,194, right now, is the page.
Yep, so right now, so they're budgeted was...
Forty-seven, eighty-two.
Election workers were allocated $40,782, so far, they've used $11,194. Do they get busy this time of year? Yeah, but not bad. They're not going to use that much on it. They have a lot, even with the early voting.
Yeah, but this was the first year that we had early voting on, and that was just recently.
Right, so I'm going to let you know that this is what they're asking for, in my opinion, exactly twice what they need. It's an improvement over the last few years, we haven't used them.
Hey, I'll, I'll give you those stats, I mean, twenty-twenty-one, they use $16,700, twenty-one, twenty-two, $10,280, twenty-two, twenty-three, $15,758, nine, and then initiate it just over. So they haven't even reached $20,000.
And I'm, and I'm not...
And any initiatives.
I'm not...
And, and, one more, can I, like, when they did early voting, it wasn't the election workers, it was the registrars that did the early voting.
Yeah, so the number they...
They didn't need all the workers, so...
And, and if you think about it, I mean, they're pushing a lot of town meetings, a lot of special meetings, so even with that, we haven't been expending that much.
And even still on that one, Kevin? If you had to go another five, you'd still be at $25,000.
Grounds, he gave me a list, it said you could do it without $1,000 worth of planning supplies, if you take a look at what was being proposed for building grounds, that's pretty much what we looked to, what we were adding this year. So he said you'd probably do without it. So that's on page, on the second page, there, this, towards the top. So it takes out that thousand there, and tractor snowblower, he said, again, you could probably take that thousand as well. Biggest, two, one of the two biggest hits that I have here is, if you look under building inspector. This was the big change this year, we are very fortunate, we had a person who was interested in the building inspector full-time position, has to pass a certified test. I had a discussion with him today. I asked him, and by the way, there's like seventy, between seventy and seventy-five towns, which do not have a full-time building inspector. And the, the short story here is, most of the time, people who are working in the trades, who are certified for five years, are looking at a certain age to get out of the trade because of whatever physical reasons, or they just want to try something different. Those are the people that are, that are taking these positions. Usually, they're the older members of society, and they're looking to do something different. So they come in, they may, may pass, they may or may not pass the test, if they do pass the test, they're not here for long. We are very fortunate in the town of Plainfield, we had three building inspectors, two certified, who, under their guidance, it was Rob, her, it was Rick Martell, who were able to help us out quite a bit, and even after they retired, because they came in under their certifications to still continue doing the work as contractors. So that's why you see here a full-time department head, you see one that's listed as assistant inspector slash computer salaries, and you see one that says contracted part-time building inspector. The plan at this point is to eliminate the one in the middle, assistant inspector slash computer salary, because he was only going to be here for a few months, just eliminate him up, up front, right off the bat, that's $39,385. We would have, whoever applies to that position hired, and for full-time, you would then have Rick to stay on as the part-time, Rick would be doing the work for you line by a regular basis, but still helping and supporting the new person coming in.
So, so now, the new guy would be...
Full-time.
Full-time?
Top, on top of that list.
Okay, and then you drop...
I get rid of the middle one that says, is doing two jobs. So that's why I have the $39,385. After that, you can all notice on economic development support, I'm going to be able to mention, economic development support, ADC. So you see the $24,000 that's listed in there? That was that Taike company. What I decided to do was, she's picking up very quickly and working with John from Taike, and so I anticipate if we keep him on with her for, for July, August, and September, if he finishes the training, I think we can be okay. So we would eliminate $18,000 worth of that. Then she said she would also be willing to cut $1,000 in her training, and $1,000, $2,000 in marketing. It doesn't look like it right now, because there may be some money in marketing, but the bottom line is, what she's doing is, we have those things for mailers that we did last year, she's doing those again with the cards, and so they don't come out until late in the budget process. So that's why it looks like there's a lot of money there now, it won't be. So, but she was willing to knock off for the marketing $2,000. I think, as I mentioned before, the recreation senior vehicle, I think it was overstated with the numbers, because if you're getting two new vehicles, you shouldn't need that much money for the maintenance, and that's what we have, two new vehicles, I mean, one's here, one's in shift. The other one is park maintenance, I got an email from Mark saying maybe he got either five, and up to $10,000 sort of park maintenance, because if you look now, on the current budget, park maintenance...
Other projects.
Park maintenance, right now, he, it was allocated $15,000, he's only spent $3,800. So he's overestimated his budget.
So he doesn't do the park maintenance, doesn't, for recreation, doesn't like, do the mowing, that's our...
That's our, our maintenance that year. But there are other things that they would be doing for maintenance, or if they had to fix something, like if you had a, a ball field which needs clay, or if you need, and that's who do, who support that.
Yep.
So that's why he had that money in there for that. I, I do think it was overestimated, so whether it's $5,000, $7,500, that, that would probably be my guess, I would say $7,500. Legal fees, I hope and pray we never have to get to that level, but I think if we knock another $10,000 off of legal fees, um... This year, it's going to be tight, we're going to be able to make our way through, and if you take a look at the current legal fees right now, it looks good on paper. Right now, we are about forty-six percent left, however, I am now in contract negotiations with six different entities, those bills rack up quick. So I think I can probably knock off, I wanted to go up higher, but I'll knock off the $10,000 in a minute, if anything really happens. By the way, if anything happens on any of these items, we're going to have to go back to the board of finance, student line of transfers, it's not a contingency. We'll have to go back to do that, or ask some money out of the fund balance, depends on what the issue is. Next one up is boards and commissions, meeting coordinator, we can haul up on that every year, at least, so that's going to come out. I have here the fire marshal, who said he would give up $500 in his training, $500 for the equipment for the emergency command center. You also have the animal patrol, who said they would give up $1,000 of the vet, and $1,000, $500 of the supplies. If you add that all up with the way it was printed, then you're talking $111,007. If you wanted to make some changes and knock off the next for $5,000 out of election, so that's...
I would, I would like to not cut the assessor software.
Assessors...
First one.
Okay.
Only because I think that our software is in dire need of help everywhere.
Yep.
So I would really rather not touch software anywhere at all.
We were really meant to say hardware, but that's okay.
No, it says assessor IT software.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, okay.
I'm into that.
Oh, okay. Still either way. I would rather not.
She's hoping to have money left over at the end of your budget, that she'd be able to purchase those computers this year, that way, that's why she said she...
Art, what's your thoughts on that? The first one that we keywelled?
On, on my suggestions? Oh, very first page, underneath it. So selectmen, and then those assessors, and clear down that.
And one of the reasons I'm saying that is because of all the trouble that we've had, I think we need to have a better top-notch hardware and software.
So you'll note that she went from $35,963, she was asking for $43,079, that's because of the computers. But she said she's going to be able to make through the year, so money left over to buy them now, before June 30th.
So she's still, should still be increasing $4,000?
Right, yep.
But here, he, his proposed cut is cutting $3,000.
Right, and although she wanted seven, uh...
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
$7,116. Well, I was looking at the current budget, and she's got $135 left in that line, which probably don't...
Yeah, I can say a lot of our departments, a lot of our departments are very, right to the, right to the penny, they do very well with turning back in a little bit of money, it's as tough some years, you don't know, like Iowa, it's, it's a, it's, it depends on the weather, otherwise Colorado.
Again, I, I would rather not touch the IT software, but...
So out of this list, we need to cut seven?
Again, it's, it's your discretion if you wanted to do more for election workers, or more for apartment maintenance, but that total, the running total with the printed numbers was $111,070, we don't have to cut that much.
No, we have to cut 105, which is...
How do you make a motion to cut it from? I think I'm more than...
Cut from your office.
So it's fifty-seven, oh, five? Seven, oh, five. I wouldn't, no, I, I wouldn't mind giving some, some of that there, that is.
I almost gave it, I gave it enough, so that you have options.
Absolutely. Like I said, I'd like to give back the IT software of your suggestions, and I'd like to give some back to the veterinary, uh, animal control, because you never know what that's gonna end up being. The stray animals we have in town.
So what we hear is suggestions of vet and others?
Vet and assessors, I would not touch the assessors.
Software?
Yeah, I would not touch the assessors IT stuff.
So could we come up with?
Yeah, I still got, you still got.
Seventy oh five. Where did, uh, where did he, um, they, and, and I know it's only a thousand dollars, but that, that takes, that takes away all his training, all his.
He does, he, he mentioned to me today that he does do some training with the fire department, he has if he wants to, so that's what he told me.
Would be great.
Yep.
Has he done it to any, um, continuing for fire, no, there's no regulations, he has to keep up on and off?
I don't know. Otherwise he would have mentioned it to me and had it in the budget.
If I was gonna, if I was gonna give it back to any one of them, they'd break the legal fees. The rest of it, so you'd have the software is three thousand, vet net, vet, it'd be another thousand, that's four thousand, you got seventeen oh five left.
That would mean there would be eight thousand two hundred ninety-five, if that'll be one.
Yeah.
And I think what we should do is all of us should run through, double check our numbers, just to make sure. So the, the issue is not doing, uh, taking anything from assessor IT, not doing anything from the veterinary for animal control, and knocking down the numbers for legal fees down to eighty-two ninety-five. Do you want, did, do you wanna do anything else with the department, right?
As far as mine.
Right now it says fifty-four, yeah, take a little more.
If I was giving it back to something that's needed.
I'd go back to legal. So if, if you upped his to fifty-four to maybe seventy-five. That's just my opinion, but you, you got a lot of different small things given by everybody, really.
I think you're, all the departments did an excellent job.
And I'm praying this passes, otherwise we'll have to go through the same exercise again.
Right, that's why I want, you know, we already voted. Cut ninety-one. So it'd be an additional twenty. So if you did that, from the park maintenance to seventy-five hundred, then that would put the legal fees at cut sixty-one ninety-five, I believe. And I'll find that.
So, what are you saying for legal fees?
Hmm?
What, what are you just saying for legal fees?
Okay, so, and, and, and in total, take any assessor out.
Yep.
Completely, three thousand, taking the veterinary, one thousand out.
Yep.
And putting recreation park maintenance?
Yep.
Up to seventy-five hundred. That would put our, and then, and then the rest of the remainder was seventeen oh five. Our total cut from the one eleven zero seventy to get to the one oh five, three sixty-five, was a difference of seven thousand seven, right? What was it then? Confuse myself, I got.
That's what I was gonna say.
It's a little, little.
Yeah.
Thirty-five bucks.
Yeah. Three sixty-five. No, that's the, it's five. The difference between eleven, uh, hundred and eleven thousand seventy and a hundred and five thousand three sixty-five.
One oh seven oh seven.
Hmm?
So that means we still have, we have to cut items that we're not gonna do yet.
Didn't you bring the recreation, the up to seven hundred fifty to cut?
Seven thousand five hundred.
Yeah, that's on that.
Yep.
So that increases and decreases.
Yeah, they're doing it legally.
Yes.
But I was trying, starting with, with the total is eleven, one flatly, seventy. If you take off the one oh five, three sixty-five, you have fifty-seven oh five to take out of this list, right? Am I right on that? Maybe change it, because.
Have you run to individual?
On that.
Do we say we're putting his training back or not?
Who's training?
Fire marshal.
The only thing we cut out of this list was, uh, assessor, the first line.
Yep.
Animal control veterinary. We're putting.
They're increasing the.
Increasing their park maintenance.
And lowering the.
A cut to their park maintenance from a cut that was initially fifty-four hundred to seventy-five.
Yep, seventy-five hundred.
Seven thousand five hundred.
Okay. And then making the legal fees eighty-two ninety-five?
Sixty-two thirty.
All right, that's further. These better sense.
Should we add them all up again? Is that all, the way they were, without any?
He didn't.
Changes, it was all with the, my, my, we needed, that's why.
What'd you come up with?
Oh, if, if they were without any changes whatsoever, that's what that number is down below, one eleven oh seven.
My, I didn't come up with that just now.
Tell you what, would you like it, so if I read it to you, and then you add it and you go? Okay. Ready, clear it out?
Yeah.
Okay, a thousand for the assessor vehicle expense, five thousand.
No, I was going on the overall number, I came up, I added everyone to three thousand, one, what we, you have.
Yep.
I came up with a different number.
Oh, for that?
Yeah. I came up with one eleven zero thirty-five, I came up with thirty-five dollars to.
Okay, well, at this point, so I've kind of moved because we're gonna need changes anyway.
You gotta, again, it would change to me, to get it to that number, right? So if that number's off.
But if, if that number is off, we just, I would say disregard it, if you're actually just adding the numbers in the column.
All right, go ahead.
All right, if I started off, uh, from scratch, we're looking at, uh, assessors vehicle expense of a thousand dollars. Election worker, five thousand dollars. Building and grounds cleaning supply, one thousand dollars. Building ground tracker, one thousand dollars. Building inspector part-time, three thou, uh, thirty-nine thousand three eighty-five. E D C off-site support, eighteen thousand. E D C training, one thousand. E D C marketing, two thousand. Recreational senior vehicle, three thousand seven hundred and fifty. Recreation maintenance, park maintenance, seven thousand five hundred. Legal fees, six thousand two hundred and thirty. Boards commission meeting coordinator, eighteen thousand. Fire marshal training, five hundred. Fire marshal, uh, emergency management equipment, five hundred. Animal control supplies, five hundred.
And that comes up too?
Good. It's the right number?
Yeah.
So that would be my, uh, request to do that cut. As read.
So, so we came up with one thousand six?
One thou, one thousand five, three sixty-five. I'm sorry, one hundred and five thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars.
I'll make a motion, make the cut says read, to the budget, to the twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
And I'll ex, I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
Uh, can I, man?
Yep.
To, to make a total of one hundred five thousand three hundred sixty-five.
Thank you. All right. Do that, would be amended, and second amended?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Here, if you're not all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.